Good morning, ladies and gentlemen, and welcome to the Wednesday, April 20th, 2022, meeting of the Lake Havasu City Planning and Zoning Commission. Would you please rise and join me for the pledge?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic where which stands one nation, a God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And Madam Secretary, would you please call the roll?
Jim Harris.
Here.
Donald Bergen.
Yes.
Chad Nelson.
Here.
Matthew Mitchell.
Here.
Sam Levin. Gabrielle Medley.
Here.
David Diaz.
Here.
Paul Laird. Susanna Ballard.
Okay, we have one vacancy this morning. Would Mr. Mitchell come forward and please fill Ms. Ballard's position to my right? And then Correspondents.
Chairman Harris.
I'm sorry?
We have one additional.
Oh, we do?
For Mr. McGowan.
Mr. Laird, would you please come up then and fill the other vacant position? Sorry about that. And Correspondents and Announcements, Mr. Morris.
Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, thank you. The only announcement I have at this point is that at the previous city council meeting, they approved the code amendments that this planning commission recommended, except for the one with the height for the RM adjacent to single-family residential. They felt that should be 18 feet, so they kept it at 18 rather than going to 30 feet. So that's the only one that didn't make it through. All the other code amendments that you recommended approval on were approved. That's all the announcements I have. Thank you.
If you would again, what was the one, the RM that was requested to go to 30 was denied?
Yes, the, right now, RM across the city is allowed 30 feet, but in the code, it says if it's adjacent to single-family zoning, it's limited to 18 feet. So the request was to make it all 30 feet the way it was originally, but the city council decided against that. They've elected to not approve that portion of those code amendments.
Did they give any reasoning for their decision?
I think at the, at the meeting, there were some members of the public that were concerned about the potential impact of 30 feet in backyards, especially abutting single-family residential. I think that was one of the aspects that the city council was concerned about.
Okay. All right, and that concludes Correspondents and Announcements. Okay. Minutes of the last meeting, are there any additions, corrections, deletions by members of the commission? Hearing none, I'll entertain a motion to approve those minutes.
I'll make a motion to approve.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion by Mr. Nelson, a second by Mr. Bergen, to approve the minutes of last meeting as written. Any discussion? Hearing none, let's go ahead and place our votes.
Mr. Bergen?
Yes.
Here you go. We got it.
Okay.
Motion passes seven to zero.
Okay. Let me first start by saying that this is a public hearing, and there is a structured order to this proceeding. City staff will present each item. There will be time for the commission to ask questions of staff, and then the applicant will have the opportunity to present their case to the commission. That being done, we will then open the proceeding to the public for their questions and input. I would ask that any one of the public that wishes to speak limit their trips to the podium and microphone to one only, keep all comments to less than three minutes, and to stay on point, and not discuss subject matter that is not pertinent to the decision being considered here today. After public testimony is taken, I will then close the public hearing and bring the motion back to the table for city staff's recommendation, discussion amongst the commission, and eventually a motion to approve or disapprove. The first item on today's agenda is ID 22-3256. It's a request for a preliminary subdivision plat for Tonto Desert Oasis condominiums at 2831 Tonto Drive, which is tract 2257, block two, lot four, creating a six-unit residential condominium subdivision in the residential Southgate R-SGD district. Mr. Morris, your presentation.
Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, Planner, Mr. Kearns will take this item. Thank you.
Okay.
Thank you, Mr. Commissioner. The subject property is located on Tonto Drive between Inca Way and Warrior Drive. The properties to the west and north are zone residential single-family district and developed as single-family uses. The properties to the south and east are zone residential Southgate district and developed with single-family and multifamily uses. The site is currently a developed six-unit multifamily complex that was built in 2019. The proposed condominium plat will convert the units into condominiums and allow them to be individually owned and included as part of an association along with the common portions of the development. The project includes six residential units with attached garages or detached carports, common shared and public utility easement. The project will have a property owners association to manage and maintain the association improvements. The common area will be privately owned, and the water and wastewater within the subdivision is installed and maintained by the association. This concludes staff's presentation. I'm available for any questions the commission may have, and I believe the applicant is also available.
Okay, any questions of staff by Commissioners? Any at all? Okay, hearing none. Is the applicant present? Please come forward, state your name for the record.
Morning Commissioners, Lee Johnson, APL surveying. The front four units are three-bedroom, two-and-a-half-bath units with two-car attached garages. In the, the two in the rear are two-bedroom, two-and-a-half-bath units with two dedicated covered carports on them, and I'm here to answer any questions you guys might have.
Any questions of the applicant by Commissioners? Okay, hearing none. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioners.
All right, this is a public hearing, and if there is anybody in the audience that wishes to speak on this item, anybody at all, please come forward and state your name for the record. Anybody? Hearing none, I'll go ahead and close the public hearing portion, bring it back to the table for staff's recommendations.
Based on the findings, the Development Review Committee recommends approval of land use action 223256, a preliminary subdivision plat for the Tonto Desert Oasis condominiums at 2831 Tonto Drive, tract 2257, block two, lot four, creating a six-unit residential condominium subdivision in the residential Southgate district.
Any questions of staff by Commissioners? Mr. Nelson?
On the, on the plat, it shows, and I drove by there, and it will be better if it has a dumpster, because everybody has individual, you know, trash cans, both recycle and regular trash can, but I would add in the motion that that dumpster does get, and that's probably a requirement in design review anyway, but that the dumpster be added as a part of the motion.
Mr. Commissioner and Chairman, the, the project's already been developed. It's developed already. It's not something that, this plat map is just to convert the existing structures into a condominium plat. The, as far as the trash enclosure, the dumpsters, if the trash hauler is comfortable with individual can services and different residential projects, then we don't necessarily require the trash enclosure. In many cases, the trash company will allow single family or single-use recycling and garbage cans in lieu of trash enclosures. So we will go to their, with their will, whatever they allow, whatever they will allow as far as trash service. So this case, they allow an individual can, so we will allow that, and when the design review was done, that would have been part of it. This is a site plan that could show a location for a trash enclosure, but if they have individual service now, we allow that to continue typically. I appreciate your concern about the trash enclosure location and making sure they have adequate services for that, but it's kind of outside the realm. That would, you're right, it's more of a design review process at that point. Thank you.
I'd like to, I'd like to have a discussion with the commission on that. If you, if you look at the, at the plat, it does show a trash enclosure down there at the bottom on the right-hand side. That's currently not there. There is room. There's a landscaping buffer right there. There is room to, to create that. If you look at the driveway, so the, the front four units there, those front portions are garages with living quarters on top. And then the drive on the right side goes down to those three parking spaces, and the trash cans are kind of like scattered along that, that drive right there. This is just discussion, but I think would be better to have that trash enclosure there. I don't know, you can look at, you can see how much driveway is in front of all these units, and if you've got, what, there's six living units there, and that would be 12 trash cans, recycle and garbage cans. So I don't know, I just think it might be cumbersome over time, and I'm just hoping for a discussion.
Well, if this is not the venue for doing that, and it would be more into design review, which has already been done on this project, it's not something that we can mandate or request at this point, as I understand it.
Well, I think that we could add it to the motion.
I'm going to defer to Ms., to our attorney, Ms. Keer.
Yeah, if it's outside the realm of the, the topic that's been presented today, we can't just add it to the motion. If it's something that, I don't even know that, that you can bring it back at this point in time. I'll defer that back to Luke. It would have to come at a different time and a different hearing. I mean, right now, today, what's before you is just approving the preliminary plat map, and so that's, it's not something that can be added by the motion.
Okay. Answer your question?
Yeah, answers my question.
All right, is there any further discussion on the, on the item?
Just one, Jim.
Mr. Laird?
Just thinking, that would be more of a code enforcement item, you know, perhaps if it's really a nuisance to have the trash containers visible, that would be the, the area to take care of it, perhaps.
Okay, thank you for your input. Anybody else? Any discussion? We are at the table for a motion, then. Anybody?
Commissioner.
Mr. Diaz?
Make a motion to approve item number 223256.
We have a motion. Do we have a second?
Second the motion.
We have a motion by Mr. Diaz, a second by Mr. Bergen, to approve land use action 223256. Any further discussion? Hearing none, let's call for the question. Place our votes.
Motion passes seven to zero.
Okay, thank you, and good luck. The next item on today's agenda is ID 223255, and this is a request to amend ordinance number 07-873, removing the zoning change conditions of approval for 2124 Kiowa Boulevard North, tract 2192, block nine, lot three. Mr. Morris, your presentation.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, thank you. The subject property is about just over half an acre. It's vacant and undeveloped. It's located on the south side of Kiowa Boulevard North, across from fire station number two. The abutting properties to the east are commercial development, and the west is an approved open storage use on these other, these eastern, western two lots. The properties in the south are multiple-family residential uses. The zoning map shows, again, the subject property C2, and those on that side of Kiowa are also C2. Across the street, the police, excuse me, the fire station is P1, and there's light industrial on that, abutting the, the fire station property. And again, to the south, it's zoned R3, multiple-family. A little bit of background, I'll go back to the site plan here, the, the area plan, if you don't mind. Attaching conditions of approval for a zoning change request is kind of unusual. It's not typically considered good planning practice today. It's acceptable to include conditions of approval for a planned development rezone. Like a planned development rezone typically has conditions that are linked to an exception that's requested by the applicant, some sort of exception to the underlying zoning district, and also typically an application includes development plan for the project. Then approvals may be based on the requested exceptions and based, also based on the submitted development site plan. In this 2007 rezone for this property, that property owner did not ask for a rezone for a PD and did not present a development plan or ask for any exceptions to the C2 zoning district. So the C2, in this case, they were asking to rezone from multiple-family to C2, but the C2 zoning, again, we don't, the city council and the planning commission typically doesn't attach conditions of approval on a straight-up rezone. So the PT, the PD zoning designation, so if this was rezoned C2/PD, then a potential property purchaser would look at that zoning and say, hey, there's a PD on this. What is, what's something special about this? So that gives the, the potential property owner a heads up that there may be something unusual about the property. The subject property is not zoned C2/PD, it's just zoned straight-up C2, so the current property owner was not aware that there were conditions of the property that do not apply to other C2 zoning district properties. The project to the south, I think the city council adds these conditions of approval because they were, felt it was in keeping for some, the project to the north, which was a shopping center with some storage units in the back, and then there was a proposed project to the south for similar sort of development. That development didn't happen, and those properties were all rezoned from a PD to the seat, to the straight-up C2. In that ordinance from 2007, the city council approved a rezoning of the property with the following conditions: that no door, no outdoor storage shall be allowed, that all permitted uses shall be contained within the buildings, and that a six-foot masonry wall shall be provided along the rear of property line, and the wall shall be architecturally compatible with the commercial buildings. In this case, what happened is the property owner came forward to ask for a, a conditional use permit for outdoor storage to expand their outdoor storage uses to the south. During research, staff discovered that this property, even though it shows zone C2, it really has some conditions of approval, and these conditions of approval say they can't do outdoor storage there. So we're asking that the ordinance be amended to remove those conditions. Removing the conditions should not have any negative impact on the area. Conditions one and two about this outdoor storage and all permitted use, all permitted uses shall be contained within the building, don't really, don't have a negative impact because outdoor storage right now is allowed in C2, and there are outdoor storage uses up and down Kiowa in this area that are allowed with C2 with a conditional use permit. And then it won't impact abutting properties, because it will be considered, any impact for the abutting properties will be taken into account during the conditional use permit process for the outdoor storage request. Condition number three is a standard requirement right now for outdoor storage under the current development code. In our development code includes requirement for a minimum of a six-foot tall masonry screen wall to screen the use from the abutting residential zoning and the right-of-way. So condition three is not necessary since it already is part of our development code. Staff supports removing all three of these conditions of approval and feel that this should be rezoned straight-up C2. Without those conditions of approval, we'll make it more clean and make it more in keeping with, someone's looking at the zoning, they'll realize they can use all the C2 uses, because it's really kind of misleading because it's not C2 planned development. That concludes staff's presentation. Thank you.
Okay, are there any questions of staff by Commissioners? Mr. Diaz?
So what, what happened in 2007 that they added? Why did these three things get added?
I believe in 2007, there was, this development to the north was there, and they had some outdoor storage, no, excuse me, storage units here, and then there was another proposed project to the south that was similar to this one to the north, and they, per their plan, they, this one on the south had a PD, and per that plan, they were not going to allow outdoor storage on that PD there. That rezoning, PD rezoning to the south got amended, and got, these properties got rezoned back to straight-up C2. So my, looking at the notes and the meeting minutes from the planning commission and city council meeting, it appears the city council felt they were trying to make this C2 property very similar to the other two abutting properties, even though the applicant did not ask for any exceptions, just asked for a straight-up rezoning to C2. So I think they were trying to maybe keep it more in line with the other developments, the one that was already there, and the future project that never had materialized, and that got rezoned to straight-up C2, and they're, the property owner now is, and the applicant is working on store, outdoor storage on those two properties. When he came in to add this existing lot to his project, that's when he discovered there were these conditions of approval on that initial 2007 rezone.
To add to that, as I recall, that particular property, the business that was projected to go in there was of a nature that didn't quite fit the area. I believe it was an automotive facility, and the residential properties to the rear were concerned about that, and so were the adjacent property owners. So those conditions, as I recall, were added because of that. Thank you. Any other questions of staff? Mr. Nelson?
So just to clarify, we're just removing these, if, if this gets approved, we're just removing these three things. We're not reverting it to any other type of zoning. That's one question. Second question is what, if the applicant does outdoor storage, what are the current requirements as far as fencing, driveway apron, landscaping, electricity, that type of thing?
If, if this gets approved, then basically these conditions of approval will be removed from the ordinance, and it will be like any other C2 zone property, which would, in staff's mind, is very clean. There are development standards for outdoor storage uses that, as I mentioned, include six-foot tall screen wall. There's some landscaping along the right-of-way. There'll be driveway requirements for that. Whatever the improvements that are required per the development code will be needed, and it will go through design review process and any appropriate permits for driveways or any buildings or any electrical, water, that sort of thing. So it'll be reviewed for the development code and also through the conditional use permit process.
Thank you.
Anybody else? Any questions of staff? Okay, hearing none. Is the applicant present? Would you like to make a presentation? Please come forward to the microphone, state your name for the record.
My name is Justin Plain, and I, Mr. Morris's presentation is better than any presentation I could, I could give you guys. So he basically said it all, but I can answer any questions that you guys have for me.
Any questions of the applicant? Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. All right, this is a public hearing. Is there anybody in the audience that wishes to speak on this item? Anybody whatsoever? Hearing none, I'll go ahead and close the public hearing portion of the, of this item and bring it back to the table for staff's recommendations.
Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, thank you. Based on the findings, Development Review Committee recommends the planning commission forward a recommendation of approval to the city council for land use action number 22-3255, amending ordinance number 07-873, removing the zoning change conditions of approval. Thank you.
All right, we are at the table for discussion and/or a motion. Commissioners, anybody? Mr. Nelson?
I'll make a motion to approve land action, or land use action number 22-3255 with staff's recommendations.
Do we have a second?
I'll second.
We have a, a motion by Mr. Nelson, a second by Mr. Mitchell, to approve land use action number 22-3255 with staff's recommendations. Any further discussion on the motion? Hearing none, let's go ahead and place our votes.
Motion passes seven to zero.
Congratulations and good luck. The next item on today's agenda is ID 2232, excuse me, ID 22-3237. It's, it's a request for a multiple text amendment to Lake Havasu City Title Zone, Title 14, Zoning Development Code, to add development standards, minimum density requirements, and minimum building height requirements to the residential Uptown McCulloch Main Street, which is R-UMS district, and the residential Commercial and Health, which is RCHD district. Mr. Morris, your presentation.
Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, thank you. Just a little background, as you're aware, the commission's discussed these zoning districts and density and building height and other aspects, potential development standards for them. There were discussions on February 16th and then March 16th of this year. After that discussion, the commission directed staff to prepare development code amendments, including the following: add a minimum density for number of units per acre, require a minimum of two levels with possible further discussion to allow the possibility of a portion of the structures to be single level, require architectural enhancements for portions of the structures facing the right-of-way, and require a pedestrian link to the street. Based on this direction from the commission, the staff prepared the following proposed amendments to development code, which we'll discuss further. The first one, we added a minimum density of 15 dwelling units per acre for those RUMS and RCHD districts. No maximum, but same as before, but still a minimum 15 dwelling units per acre. Added two potential code changes, options for discussion here relating to the number of levels. One of them was requiring two levels in height, and the other could be some two level, at least two level, and some could allow one level as a portion of the property. Also added architectural enhancements, requirements for the structures with street-facing elevations if those buildings are 20 feet or longer in width. And then added requirements for doors facing the right-of-way to have a minimum three-foot sidewalk directly linking the structure to the street. Staff also included a housekeeping amendment to table 2-10. It's correcting the minimum depth of the front yard from 20 feet to 10 feet as a typo. So with that overview, if you don't mind, we'll go through what, go through what we're showing and the proposed changes. So this is the table that is part of the general description of the RUMS code section, and what we've done here is just added a new, a new, no row here, minimum density, so 15 units per acre is a minimum. Maximum density remains NA, not, you know, no change there. We also did this, corrected this typo. Minimum front yard depth is, well, it's showing 20 feet here. It should be 10 feet. On what I call the big table, here's the big table, a lot of people are more familiar with. So in the RUMS, RCHD, and R-Southgate, these higher-density residential districts, the front setback was intended to be 10 feet on this larger table. There's two different tables. This is a specific table here for the RUMS, and it's just a typo. It should have just said 10 feet, same as the other zoning districts, they're all should be 10 feet. So there, those two sections were in conflict, and so we're correcting that conflict by correcting this. this to 10 feet instead of 20 feet. Here's some thoughts on how to deal with the building height, the number of levels, and the design standards. So, looking at two options per the commission's input, one option would be at least 60% of the footprint of the structures with dwelling units shall be at least two levels in height where they're allowed to exceed 18 feet in height, where they're allowed to go two stories. At least 60% of the structure should be at least two levels. Then, 40% could be one level. So, that's one option. Another option for that number of levels is basically requiring all units to be at least two levels in height with no option for a single level. And then, any structure over 20 feet in length facing the right-of-way shall include architectural enhancements such as pop-outs, decorative stone, non-habitable porches or stoops, or similar features on its street-facing elevation. And then, the final one would be any man door facing the right-of-way shall have a minimum of three-foot-wide sidewalk directly linking the structure to the street. So, this is the section for R-UMS. There'll be a similar section, same language that we would suggest for the RCHD. Speaking of the RCHD, here's the table that goes along with that section. We're... Again, the recommending changing that minimum density to 15 units per acre, remaining no maximum density for that zoning district. And again, this is with the section that deals with the RCHD, it would be the same language we would propose for both the UMS and the CHD. So, whatever discussion we have, we feel should apply to both those zoning districts. And here's the... Again, the big table, we'll call it, dimensional standards. It's calling out a minimum and maximum density. We used to be NA for both minimum and maximum. This is calling out 15 units per acre minimum and no maximum for those two zoning districts. And finally, there will be... As far as the building height, it shows 42 feet for those two zoning districts. We would add footnote number nine and footnote number 10. Footnote number nine would say... And 10 would read very similarly. They'd say, "See the section..." A different section for the minimum number of building level requirements. So, people would be aware, they can go 42 feet in height, but then, it would be directed to another section that'd say, "You still may have to have two stories or at least one story and two stories," or whatever we decide, whatever we move forward for the plant... For the city council. So, that concludes our overview. Be able to be more willing to go into more detail with the commission as you like. Have additional information we can present if you like also. Thank you.
Okay. Do we have any questions of staff by commissioners? I see Mr. Nelson reaching.
Luke, can you bring up the red lines on there? Let's see. Go back. There we go. I think this is turning out pretty good. I know on option one, Jim, you might want to talk about it a little bit. I think we were talking about at least 50%.
If it pleases the commission, we've got a little graphic. I can kind of show you what that... What we're intending on that.
Okay.
That might help with your discussion.
The only... Well, let's go back one more time. The only other things that I wanted to discuss was, I think that on number two, I think, you know, all structures facing the right-of-way should have architectural enhancements. And where it says non-habitable, I'd probably put a forward slash habitable because you don't know if it's coming off of... They could have a foyer downstairs or something like that. But everything else, I think, looks great.
Mr. Chairman?
Mr. Lair?
Just wondering, has a level ever been defined? I could think of it as story. I could think of it as mezzanine. I could think of it as just a change in...
Like a tri-level or something? That's not a full story.
I mean, actually, I sort of like the creativity that, you know, level implies, but I just want to make sure we're aware of what that also means.
Very good point. Probably should say story.
You can certainly make that change throughout the document, change it from level to story.
Mm-hmm. Yeah. Good point. Good. And with regards to Mr. Nelson's comment about any structure over 20 feet, I would suggest that any structure that faces the street should have some sort of aesthetic Don't necessarily need that 20 feet. Anybody else?
Yes, I have a question.
Mr. Diaz?
Can you go with the minimum-max, the density of...
Yes. As far as the proposed density...
You had mentioned that there was currently no minimum and no maximum, correct?
Correct.
So, what... On average, what is... What are you seeing built as for a minimum? Like, if you had a minimum number on average, what are they?
Well, let's see. I can go over some...
Just ballpark it.
Some existing developments that we discussed. Some of them have newer development that has the density on it. So, this is, I think, the 10 that we talked about a couple of meetings ago. Here's one that is example of 26 units per acre on Mesquite. That's a fairly older one. A lot of these are not the newest structures in town. Let's see if I can get this thing to work here. It says it's not responding. Let's see here. There we go. Here's another example of 35 units per acre on two... Just under two and a half acres. Here's 48 units per acre. Here's 42 units per acre, two levels with garages underneath, and that's on one... Just over one acre. Here's something on half... Just under half an acre, that's 27 units per acre. There's 12 units in this project. And then, for the... Some of the newer ones, this is one on Pima Wash. It's 23 units per acre, just a little over half an acre.
Yeah. Stay on that one. Now, you know, when you first drive by this development, you know, it looks like it's, you know, it's great, but when you take a good look at it, the parking is... I mean, it'd be hard to park a bicycle in between some of these things to get it in the garage. So, my only concern is, I agree with my fellow commissioners that some of these changes are good, but I'm always concerned about parking. And, you know, people have two cars, and they have friends come over on the weekend, and it's just... It's just an issue with parking. You can't park on Swanson. You can't park on Mesquite. So, I just hope when we do these developments, they... We figure out the parking part of it, or they get creative or something, you know? So, that's it.
Any other comments or discussion? Nobody? Okay. Well, I will open it up to the public. This is a public hearing. Is there anybody that wishes to speak on this item? Anybody at all? Please come forward, state your name for the record.
John Parrott. I live at 2490 Lima Drive, and I'm employed by Cobblebanker Commercial Realty. I'm sure this is a silly question, but the properties that are in these districts that are zoned commercial, UMS or commercial CHD, are not affected in any way by this amendment. Is that a simple statement?
That's correct. This only applies to the residential zoning districts. These zoning districts do not allow commercial. So, the RCHD and the R-UMS, the R designates residential. So, residential only despite the R... CHD has commercial health district in the name, but there's no commercial use in that residential portion of that. So, this residential zoning is only for residential. There's no commercial or mixed use in these zoning districts.
Does that answer your question?
Yes. Let me give you a hypothetical example. I own the property at 2036 McCulloch. It's 5,000-square-foot building, single-story. If I want to build two condos on that, 2,500 square feet each, am I going to be restricted by this ordinance at all?
Thank you for the question. That's an interesting one. There's already residential development on the property, and it's zoned in these zoning districts?
Zoned commercial.
Okay. If it's zoned commercial, we would have to look at what's allowed in that commercial zoning district. It could be a mixed-use zoning district. So, it's on McCulloch. It's probably the... It's probably the mixed-use UMS, but that... It sounds like that does not... Your property does not fall within these zoning districts. So, this change... Any changes here would not affect your property directly.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Anybody else in the audience that wishes to speak on this item? Please come forward, state your name for the record.
Commissioner Lee Johnson, APL survey. I'd also like to agree with Mr. Diaz on the parking issue. The last three, four projects that we brought up through here on... In these zoning districts, all of them have met the minimum density that you guys are proposing. And every single comment during those meetings was nothing but parking. And so, if you increase the density, we... On those projects, they were all met. So, even if you hold it at that, you still have a parking issue on site by what code requires. Now, you're telling them to go up higher heights, multiple stories. You're going to go from one-bedroom to two-bedroom to three-bedroom units, requiring more parking, which is going to require them to reduce the density to achieve...
Exactly.
What you're requiring. So, it's a mixed bag of what you're looking at. So, I think this needs to be looked at quite a bit further on what you guys are proposing because soon as you guys go up higher, you know, code's going to require additional parking. Now, you're not going to meet the density. You just purchase self into a loophole.
So, what you're saying is with conflicting requirements, we could effectively render these properties somewhat unbuildable.
Somewhat.
So, good point. Probably needs some further study.
Right. Thank you, guys.
Thank you, Mr. Johnson. Anybody else in the audience that wishes to speak on this item? Hearing none, I'll go ahead and close the public hearing portion of the meeting and bring it back to the table for staff's recommendations.
Commissioners, thank you. If you don't mind, I wouldn't mind showing a couple more slides to illustrate the differences between the 60%...
Most certainly. Go ahead.
And the one... The one level and two level. So, here's an example of... Generic example of 1,000-square-foot, looking down the floor plan of a building, 1,000-square feet, level one. And this is intended to be the building elevation. So, let's say we have a 1,000-square-foot building, and it's a single-story here. Then, we're going to add the second level, and per the option one, we're saying, hey, the... There has to be at least 60% of this footprint has to be at least two levels. So, this could be an example of the 60% above the ground floor of... For level two. So, that would be an example of option one that we talked about with allowing some single family... Some single-story, and then, requiring at least 60% of the footprint be two-story where there's residences in that portion, in that building. So, I just want to show that. Here's, again, some general examples of exterior treatment, pop-outs, stone... Stone frontage, things like that. And then, this is an example of sidewalks linking the front entries to the street, just to provide the commission with some examples. So, with that, based on the findings, Development Review... Excuse me. The Development Review Committee recommends the Planning Commission forward a recommendation of approval to City Council for Land Use Action 22-3237, amending Title 14 zoning development code. Per the tracked changes in the R-UMS and RCHD code documents, selecting option two, which is the two stories for the R-UMS other standards, and also option two, the two stories for the RCHD other standards. And as a reminder, this item will be heard at the City Council's May 24 meeting with the commission's recommendation. Thank you.
Are there any further questions from staff? Okay. Hearing none. We are at the table for discussion and/or a motion. Ms. Medley?
I have a question, actually. Back to the parking thing because I know we've discussed it before, and I know it's a code issue, correct?
Yeah. The parking requirement is in the code. If you like, I can review the parking requirements for these two zoning districts.
I don't think that's necessary.
Okay.
Are you done?
Yes.
I also have a problem with the minimum density. I don't think we're quite there yet because of what Mr. Johnson brought up. We are going to have a conflict by trying to force a minimum density versus the parking. When you start to get more density, like he says, higher capacity units, it's going to require more parking. And we do have some parking restrictions that are probably going to be in conflict. And I think there needs to be a little more thought given to this minimum density rather than just saying it has to be 15 units per acre. There's got to be some sort of mitigating verbiage in there for when there is a conflict.
I can certainly give you examples of, again, other projects, going back to these slides. If I can get this. Here's an example of 24 units per acre. This is not per the design standards that we have now, but you'll see there's on this under half an acre, there's 24 units on here, single story, single level. They're providing their required parking on site. And it's something... If we go to even older projects, here's a project that has parking. This may not be the best example because it has surface parking, and the code's required covered parking. But if we go to some of the other examples, here's 20... Here's 12 units, and this is 27 units per acre. This is 12 units on less than half an acre. And you would think that's not very dense, but this is 27 units per acre on this property. And it has garages and carports here for this property. So, I think you're correct. It sounds like, obviously, if you have more units, it's going to drive more parking requirements. And it will... I think the development community will have to look at this and maybe be more... A little more creative. I don't think 15 units per acre is that many, quite frankly. And I think with design, it should be able to work with the parking. Here's an example, again, of... These were... These are developments that were done well before the current development code, and back in the day, it had more stringent parking requirements. It required more parking spaces per unit. In this case, we have 42 units per acre. I'm presuming they met all the parking requirements back in the day. They had parking down below. It's kind of hard to see here, but there's parking below and two stories above. So, it's an example of something that required more parking than our current code requires, and they've done it through this sort of process. And this is not something that's... This is something that's fairly typical of what you think of as a downtown area where there is more density, more people. Of course, there's more parking and more... Because there's more residences. So, it becomes a design element for the property owner, the designer, the architect, builder to... How are they going to incorporate that into the project and make it work? And I think it can be done. I think it's not the cookie cutter that maybe a lot of the developers have, a standard cookie cutter model. They're going to have to adapt that model, or they may have to adopt that... Adapt that model for something that will work and something we're looking, again, for more density, more units in the city overall. And downtown is a great place to have more additional units. So, I think you're right. The parking is an important concern. I think, again, with the design that the developers can come up with and the architects, I think that can be met, especially at 15 units per acre. That's not really that many units. It's more than zero, of course, or one, but I think it can be done through good design and good use of the property. So...
Mr. Tunaman? Did you have something to say?
I just wanted to say that with no minimum, you could technically have a single-family house built on one of these properties. So, that's the other philosophy to set a minimum is so we don't get single-family housing in the downtown area.
I understand that.
So... And as Luke pointed out, some of these developments that we are seeing, currently seeing with these cookie cutter-type deal are meeting this 15 minimum per acre. So, I just wanted to bring that up. And the other thing I wanted to bring up is always remember that there's the PD process, right? So, we set these standards. A developer says, "I can't make this work because of the parking. I can't do the 60%, the two levels because of these certain circumstances." I can't do the sixty percent, the two levels because of these certain circumstances. He can have the opportunity to come back to you folks with the PD process and, and state these reasons why he can't. And you can set that stipulation that that wouldn't be required on that specific property. So I just wanted to bring that up, that there is a PD process that can come back and ask for forgiveness on any, any zoning, not just this, any, any zoning requirement. So just please don't forget that you have that process in place as well.
All right, thank you. Any other discussion? We are at the table for discussion and/or a motion, Commissioners. Anybody? Mr. Nelson?
I'd like to make a motion. Still drafting it real quick. All right. I'd like to recommend approval of land use action two-two dash three-two-three-seven. Recommending option two with the following changes. At least fifty percent of the buildings to be two-story. Change the word "level" to "story." Change two of option two to any structure facing, the right-of-way shall include architectural enhancements such as pop-outs, decorative stone, habitable slash non-habitable porches or stoops, or similar features in its street-facing elevations. And any additional staff's recommendations?
Okay, we have a motion by Mr. Nelson with some modifications. Do we hear, do I have a second?
I'll second the motion.
We have a motion by Mr. Nelson and a second by Mr. Mitchell to approve, I get to the number here again, ID number two-two dash three-two-three-seven with modifications as, as recorded. Any further discussion on the motion?
Mr. Chairman, Luke, can I just confirm with you? Did you, do you understand what he's suggesting to change?
Yes, my understanding is you want to go, keep everything. The only changes are in the development standards portion of it, under the other standards. So fourteen oh two oh three H three and the H and the I four, no, no, H four and I four. The standards for the uptown McCulloch and the residential, um, commercial health district. You want to say between option one and two, option one was sixty percent. Option two was fifty, was all of it two levels, two stories. Basically, you're saying you want to go with fifty percent. So if you don't mind, my, option one with fifty percent instead of sixty percent?
Correct.
Okay, so, and then removing in item number two under that section the word "over twenty feet in length," because you said any structure facing the street should have.
Yeah, so delete twenty feet.
And then basically remove the non-habitable porches, just make it say habitable porches or stoops.
Habitable slash non-habitable.
Non-habitable, so am I fair to say, could we just take out habitable, non-habitable, just put porches and stoops? Is that?
Uh, yeah, that's fine.
And then, yeah, I think that's the, that's the changes as I recall them. Oh, yes, change the level to story. Yes, thank you. I like that there. And change all references to level to story.
Any further discussion on that by Commissioners? Everybody understand? No further discussion? Then let's call for the question.
Motion passes six to one.
Good modifications, Mr. Nelson. All right. We're now at the call to the public portion of the meeting. If there's anybody in the audience that wishes to speak to the Commissioner on any subject whatsoever, now's the time to do it. We may not respond, but you can come and speak to us. Anybody for the call to the public. Hearing none, I'll close the call to the public. Future meetings, Mr. Morris.
Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, yes, we have a meeting scheduled for May fourth. We do have at least one item for that agenda. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, and thank you all for participating. We are adjourned.